Welcome to the regular meeting of the Berkeley Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, August 25th, and in accordance with the ongoing state of emergency and the governor's executive order, this meeting is being conducted virtually via Zoom. Could everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the Republic
For which it stands
One nation under God indivisible with liberty
With liberty and justice
for all Okay, Ms. Lutto, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Buckler?
Here.
Commissioner Campbell?
Here.
Commissioner Kempner?
Here.
Commissioner Murad?
Here.
Commissioner Patterson? Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Trotto?
Here.
Chair Kapalansky?
Here. All right, next up we have the agenda. I will go down the list and ask if anyone has any amendments to the agenda. Commissioner Trotto, any amendments?
No.
Commissioner Kempner?
No.
Commissioner Campbell?
No.
Commissioner Buckler?
Oh.
Commissioner Richardson?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Smith?
Nope.
Commissioner Murad? Tim, any amendments? No? Okay, and I don't have any either.
No.
Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Ms. Lutto, could you call the roll, please?
Campbell?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. All right, next up are the minutes from the July 28th meeting. I will go around to everyone again and ask if you have any changes to the minutes. Commissioner Trotto?
No.
Commissioner Kempner?
No.
Commissioner Campbell?
No.
Commissioner Buckler? Commissioner Richardson?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Nope.
And Commissioner Murad?
Nope.
And I do not have any changes either. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Was there a second?
Support.
Okay, a motion and a second. Ms. Lutto, could you call the roll, please?
Uh, Kempner?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yeah.
Campbell?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Okay, the minutes have been approved. Moving on to communications. I did not see anything. Did we receive any communications, Erin?
No.
Okay. That brings us to citizen comment. If any members of the public wish to speak during the appropriate agenda item, we ask you to please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you've called in. Comments can also be submitted to planning@berkleymish.net. A reminder that the Planning Commission will not engage you in discussion, and we ask you to please state your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Um, Erin or Tori, do we have anyone who wants to make a comment on a non-agenda item at this time?
I do not see anyone at this time.
And we did not receive any emails.
No.
Okay, then we'll close the first citizen comment, and that brings us to the first item on the agenda, which is the master plan. Erin?
Uh, yes, so last month, um, Ben, or I'm sorry, Megan Mason Minock from Carly Wharton Associates was here to present their update and kind of bring you up to speed on what we've been discussing, as well as a lengthy presentation on the corridors. Um, so in your packet, you will see a memo from them dated August 19th, 2020, um, in which they kind of provide some background on what the Master Plan Steering Committee discussed for the other corridors, specifically 11 Mile and Woodward, um, and then the discussion of design guidelines. Um, one other item that they included in your packet was an outline. This is a draft outline of the master plan, so um, we would like to have any input or any thoughts that you planning commissioners have about how this is going to be, uh, laid out. And then, um, they provided some, a summary of the steering committee's discussion, specifically 11 Mile. Um, looking at it in terms of lots of opportunities, but it's undeveloped, um, it needs, um, some guidance, land use approach as opposed to, um, opening up the zoning requirements and focus more on the quality of the development rather than specifically the land use. So we focus more on, um, the aesthetics of the building and the site improvements rather than making sure that we have, um, whatever the land uses are specific to that area. Um, right now, they're, they're limited to kind of create this light industrial district, um, but a lot of the buildings in that area remain vacant or underutilized. Um, so opening up the zoning, um, and focusing more on the, the aesthetics of the area would, um, hope to spur developments so that way people could, could come into there for a retail shop, a coffee shop, um, anything like that. Um, they also discussed allowing for multiple family, including townhomes, um, those would be, um, including east side of Coolidge, uh, where appropriate. Certainly not every parcel should be developed for multiple family, um, but allowing that to be done if, if so desired in the future. Um, for 11 Mile, there's no radical roadway changes, um, we were focused more on the beautification, so talking a lot about streetscape, landscaping, uh, and even some partscaping where possible. So those are the items that they, we discussed in depth, uh, with the Master Plan Steering Committee for 11 Mile. Now for Woodward, um, we're kind of uncertain on how to approach that. Um, because Woodward is a state highway and because it is shared with so many jurisdictions, it's not something that's, um, you know, we could do a whole lot with. Um, so we're looking at taking opportunities when possible and focusing on the gateway and the identification of the area, um, instead of making for these, uh, larger plans. Um, but then also making plans for properties to purchase the interior lots, uh, to convert to parking to support the businesses on, on Woodward. So those were the things that we discussed at the Master Plan Steering Committee. And then Carly Wharton put out the the feelers for design guidelines. Now we have one that's already in kind of, um, has been approved or recommended approval from the Planning Commission to City Council for the entire downtown area. Um, but this is more focusing on the, the corridors, and so design guidelines would be specific to each corridor, um, so that they have a cohesive vision. Um, the guidelines would articulate the differences between the corridors, and the main focus would be on 11 Mile, Greenfield, and the space, uh, the properties on 12 Mile that are east of Coolidge. So those are the, um, those are the highlights. So we'd like to open this up to discussion if you have any, uh, what are your thoughts? What are your ideas? What is your vision for, for those corridors?
Okay, any, anybody want to start with this one? Oh, Ms. Buckler.
Um, so I like the idea of having a better vision for 11 Mile. My concern on putting multi-residential family housing, um, multi-family residential housing and, um, higher density development is the lack of a, a D cell lane on there. So they just redid 11 Mile, what, is it around like eight years, maybe seven, eight years they redid it maybe? Um,
Eight.
Pardon me?
Yeah, I think it's 14 or 15 years ago.
Wow.
It's out there, it's, yeah.
So they did the full-depth rebuild and
Yeah.
um, but the turning, or, and there's no turning lane, um, most of it. So I think that makes it hard to have any kind of dense development because there's just nowhere for the traffic to go, and how to get around them, and we would have to reconsider. And that's Oak Park and Huntington Woods, and I'm not sure if that's a county road or if that's a city road now. I can't remember if there was like a, I can't remember. I know it's
It's owned by the cities.
It is owned by the cities. All right, so we'd have to get agreement to go down to like kind of additional, maybe some D cell lanes. It would take some forethought.
What, what does Oak Park have planned for their side, do you know? Erin, I know they just redid thing, their plan recently.
You know, I couldn't tell you on that front. I haven't done an in-depth review.
Yeah, their plan is just being, I think they're just put it out for discussion like this in the last couple of weeks, and I think they go in front of the Oakland County Board in September. I just did this in on Wednesday or Tuesday, or I mean, I'm, actually, it was just this Monday, so they're up in mid-September.
Because it would be interesting to see, you know, because that, that's a really good point, Michelle, about, um, you know, how if that road would have to be readdressed, the striping on the road or the lane layout, what they have planned for, for theirs would be interesting.
Huntington Woods, I'm, I'm gonna say is not gonna like that idea because they have residential that butts right up to it, or very low density. I think they have a new market there, the daycare, the city building.
But even if we looked at, at half of it?
Yeah. One-way, two-way. I want everybody to relax, it gets slow on the way back.
Uh, Mr. Richardson, did you have something that you were gonna jump in with?
Well, I was gonna jump in just first to say that I, I think the, the letter and, uh, Erin's summary are, uh, very accurate and complete, so, uh, the commission can, can, you know, has the benefit of, of accurate information about what's transpired so far. Um, uh, I, there, there was considerable discussion about the, the right of way on 11 Mile and limitations that it imposes. Um, I, I think it's fair to say that, uh, any multi-family that, uh, it was contemplated would be, um, you know, very modest scale of developments, townhouses, duplex, something like that. Um, and, um, uh, you know, um, so as not to create, uh, you know, major headache reconfiguring, uh, traffic. Um, it's kind of kind of something that I think the sense was reserve the idea of developing the area in that fashion in future years, but, uh, don't, um, don't take concrete steps at this point to, uh, to make it happen. Uh, so, um, I'm, I'm comfortable with the way the discussions have gone so far, I guess, uh, but, you know, I think Ms. Buckler has made, uh, uh, a valid point, which kind of ties into what we actually did talk about, as a matter of fact, so, um, you know, any, any kind of multi-family down there would have to be, um, on a very modest scale, so, um, uh, you know, as far as Woodward goes, I, I think the sense was there's been so much planning on Woodward already, and Berkeley has participated in that planning, and it's a state highway anyway, uh, you have to deal with, uh, you know, the state highway department to make it any, you know, make any kind of decisions about reconfiguring lanes or road diets, um, so we kind of wanted just to leave what had been done in place and not, not really mess with it, uh, and, and I, I support that approach, you know, um, uh, you know, I, I certainly don't think we should talk about going backwards. I don't think we should talk about, uh, you know, eliminating the idea of transit stops or, um, you know, the other, um, concepts that, that we included in our previous planning, just because we've had economic setbacks. I think we need to, we need to focus on the, on quite a long-term vision for our stretch of Woodward, and, um, uh, so leave on of alone is the kind of the kind of the, kind of the thinking that we're bringing to the commission. Um, you know, so those are my comments. I, I think, I think the one area with some potential for change is the uh, Greenfield 11 Mile, uh, segment, um, stretching to Coolidge, and maybe, maybe you've only half of that, um, uh, you know, and, and the idea there is because the road concerns, uh, the idea there is to try to, try to make creative use of, of existing buildings, existing, um, uh, layout, uh, along our side of the road. Um, kind of spruce it up so that we can attract, uh, more business tenants to that area. So, those are my comments about it.
What are your comment? Looking at the 11 Mile Road area, there's a big portion of that area where it's kind of locked in because there's residential houses behind them. I don't know what's happened over on, you know, Main Street, but it's not quite as pronounced, but, uh, you're, you're kind of locked in on whatever size lot you have because of the residential portion directly behind it. I know that it's been commercial and industrial and everything like for many, many years, but if someone did want to expand or even grow, you run into problems with rezoning of the houses behind there and parking in that area. Um, I know that in the past, I've had some ties with these businesses in that area, and we've had a lot of problems with parking and ended up parking on the street, and somehow they, they need to have the ability to change zoning in, in the area if they choose to buy up a house, but instead of the whole zoning work, similar to what happened on, you know, 12 Mile. If some big, some big developer comes in, do they have to go through the rezoning process, or can we kind of work it into the master plan where they could have the ability to possibly change that during the process? I don't want to hamster somebody in the same scenario with the parking situation like over on Cummings, but it might be a good selling point if you buy up four houses and, you know, build some kind of development there. It might help, help out the area.
So it does seem like there have to be some parcel consolidation. I think you're right, Matt, from areas 11 Mile, um, you know, and just like we were talking about around some of our other four major roads, it might be worth looking at those adjacent parcels.
Mm-hmm. I don't think you can get away with it so much on the, the Huntington Wood side from Coolidge to Woodward, because a lot of the houses run parallel to 11 Mile Road, but from Coolidge to Greenfield, a lot of them are perpendicular, so you could easily buy up a lot or two to expand your facility. But the same, although there's only residential, so they're kind of, you know, stuck in that scenario. You'd have to go through the whole rezoning of everything and tear it down. You have to go through the whole process.
Right, and I think you'd still have to look at rezoning, no matter what the master plan says, but maybe it could be set up so that rezoning is much easier to accomplish than it would be otherwise.
I believe, now Erin might have a different recollection, but I think we did talk about uh, loosening zoning requirements in that particular area to allow for different kinds of uses. Uh, you know, uh, not so much expanding the zoning there like, uh, Matt's talking about, but, but just, uh, ma- introducing more flexibility.
I'm not saying to do any direct changes, but I'm just saying we need to have some kind of direction as to if they have the ability to do that, or easy pathway to go down. So if the developer comes in and says they want to buy four houses, similar to what they did on Greenfield, and build a development there, streamline the process. Make it more attractive to the developer. Yeah, so the, the basis of the master plan is to discuss doing those things, and then if that was to come about, it would make the rezoning process or the development process easier. Um, if they were to rezone or if they wanted to, to build, and the way that the parcels are set up, there's not going to be any high, you know, super high-rise development. They're, they're just not deep enough. The parcels really just aren't deep enough for that, but something similar to a townhome, um, you know, those could be supported in that area if they so choose.
All set on that, Matt? All set?
I'm all set.
Okay.
I'm looking at 11 Mile, that's all. I'm just trying to figure out what to do.
Yeah, that's a tough one. Uh, Marty?
11 Mile though, 11 Mile, especially between Greenfield and Coolidge, has always been a difficult one. We've talked about a lot of things in the past, and I think we're spot on here with, uh, what Erin has, the appropriately scaled multi-family and townhouse development. Uh, we talked about, um, we talked about, um, uh, work-lives spaces, not only here, but other, other areas in Berkeley, and they don't seem to be happening. Uh, we talked about, uh, not small industrial, but you know, our, at the time, uh, we were saying, you know, artists and studios and things like that, but those kind of things don't necessarily happen either. But I could see, you know, there's a lot going on there, and we could very easily see some smaller scale multi-family and townhomes, and they can be rather thin. Um, the, the streets, as we all know, are perpendicular in that area to, 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 uh, 11 Mile, and if it came down to buying a property, uh, or too deep, um, you're not going into the next street or anything like that, so there's possibilities for it all along there. As you go, as you go east towards Coolidge, uh, the properties feel a little deeper. We have some larger scale, uh, um, uh, properties there now and, and businesses there. As you start going east between, uh, east of Coolidge uh, to Mortison, again, we have some, you know, durst lumburs there. We have some large, large properties, um, that's, that's pretty well established. We talked about that section between, uh, the next section, Mortison, a little farther east. Um, actually, go back, I believe it was Henley, to maybe Cass. We talked in the past about something similar to what we talked about in Greenfield is, is, is taking maybe going to the next street, which I believe is Princeton.
Yeah.
And, and, and taking the depth to maybe do some more housing. Obviously, if small-scale housing on our side, plus all along, uh, uh, Huntington Woods, all the way from Coolidge to, uh, Woodward. So I wouldn't want to see anything very, um, very big there. And again, traffic-wise, I think the, the, the the facilities or the, the developments we're talking about, I understand what Ms. Buckler's saying. I don't think we're gonna be looking at large developments, which are gonna vastly increase the traffic on, on 11 Mile between Coolidge and, um, Greenfield. Things get pinched down. It's a very slow speed limit going all the way to Woodward from Coolidge, so it's not really a thoroughfare. So I don't, I don't see, um, big traffic changes, any, any developments that'll cause big traffic changes there. You know, obviously, someone could come in with something, but I don't see that as a direction we want to go in. Um, are we talking about Woodward, or do you want to just stick to 11 Mile for now?
I think everyone's been kind of mixing their comments in, so if you have some Woodward comments, go for it.
You know, Woodward is not our downtown. Woodward is not Berkeley's image. Um, I, uh, it's been studied for decades. And, um, it is a hodgepodge of small, small, um, uh, uh, projects, small buildings, smallish, um, businesses. There's a couple of big ones in there. Gonna have a hard time, and, and I will have a hard time rezoning back in along Woodward. Um, and we've, we've had them before, and we'll have them again for large projects, which is something on Woodward. There's an image here on page, I don't know if these don't have pages. Um, design guidelines, it says "street wall." I don't know what page it's on. But when I was reading this, I don't think that's what we want at all in Berkeley along Woodward. That, that's kind of scary to me, a building that's a thousand feet long and three or four stories tall. I don't think we want to do that. Um, but those are my, my, uh, uh, my opinions. In Oakland Manor, there's some covenants in the subdivision, you know, about what we can do, and, well, mostly what we can't do. And we don't know about, I guess farther south, there might be some covenants too. Someone correct me if I'm, I'm in error. So it's a difficult, Woodward's a difficult thing. I don't know if we want to get into big things. Obviously, if there's, if mass transit becomes a reality, a bus system above and beyond what they're already trying to do becomes a reality, the node points, there's opportunity for development around there, but I don't see a a building wall from 11 Mile to 12 Mile. I don't think that's what we want to do. And again, it's not our downtown. It's more of a regional thing, uh, it's a state road. Um, um, I'll start repeating myself, so anyway, that's my thoughts on Woodward.
Uh, may I, may I say something to that? Without going on for a half hour, Marty, can you, can you relate how, uh, Westborne was able to pull off their their development, uh?
Westborne was a unique project. They did buy a couple houses and they closed up, it was a proposal to close off, um, I think it's Larkmore. And there's a lot of, um, a lot of folks were leery of that. But Westborne is, it's, it's, it's dense because of traffic, but it's not a big building. It's a low-scale building, uh, so you got two things going. There's a lot of cars coming in and out, but they don't go back into the subdivisions. It's all in and out of Woodward. You have a connection onto Harvard. But, um, it has been, as time went on, and I'm sure everybody's been there, the back gate off of Larkmore, it's actually a very nice development. It was executed very well. Uh, and they won, they won over the minds, uh, and, uh, they won over the concerns that the local residents had. Does that answer your question, Mark?
Yeah, um, you know, I mean, we, we, we kind of feel like our hands are tied on Woodward, yet that was a, a project, well, it was before my time, but
Mm-hmm.
project that, uh, was pulled off quite, quite, quite well.
Um, yeah, but realize there's two different things in density. There's, there's, parking is one thing, or, or intense, uh, I should call it not density, well, it is, but intense buildings. Parking is one thing, traffic is part of that, uh, but it is not a big building in scale. And, um, uh, you start getting to three and four-story buildings, which may have residential, office, retail, whatever it has. They're nice, everybody loves them, but parking's gonna be a huge problem going deep into the communities, into the subdivisions. Um, but they're very large-scale, and I think Westborne achieved it well by staying small-scale.
Commissioner Murad?
Uh, I can add a little bit to the Westborne thing, uh. I think it was before all of our times, first of all. So I don't even think Marty was on the Planning Commission in the initial Westborne one in your expansion.
Yeah, I was there for the expansion, yeah.
But I think, right, yeah, and I, and we've had neighbors that were impacted by their expansion. Said they're great neighbors, so uh, I think, I think that is like the model project that Berkeley has seen over the last 25, 30 years. Uh,
So, if I may interrupt you, another thing about what Another thing about Westborne is that is an owner-operator. They own it, and they, they, it's their business. A lot of these bigger structures, which, you know, may be, uh, retail, they're rentals. So when they're the owners, they're the neighbors, they're residents of Berkeley. So when they're the owners, they're the neighbors, they're residents of Berkeley, at least their business is. That goes a long way too, and that's part of the success of, uh, the expansion. Sorry, Tim, go ahead.
Yep. The other thing I have on Woodward is, you know, we, earlier this year or late last year, we passed that rezoning up there on Franklin, I think it was. It'll be interesting to see what comes of that, if anything at all.
Additional rezoning.
Yeah. Because it was, it was tied to a, a licensing issue, right? So if that applicant doesn't win one of the licenses for, uh, a marijuana business, that will not happen. Beyond that, you know, I think, you know, like everybody else kind of said, Woodward, it's, it's, it's a state, state highway, state, state-controlled road. I think eleven mile is the is the more, uh, puzzling one on how, what to do with it, because they're like, like they kind of broke down. There are really three different sections of, of eleven mile, uh, between Greenfield and Coolidge and then that stretch of, uh, Coolidge to Mortenson and then from Mortenson to Woodward. I, if if I recall correctly, when they were redoing, re-resurfacing eleven mile, it was brought to us about, because they were considering making it a three-lane road.
And I think we pushed that as a planning commission, Tim.
Yeah, and
We pushed that as a body.
Right, we did. And then we had a a session where a lot of the residents came forward and they were all against it. They said it's hard enough to back out of their driveways now and during rush hour periods. And they felt that, uh, going to a three-lane would make it more difficult. So I don't think, I don't think that's something that we should consider into the future. As for the zoning, uh, Marty, you were right. I think the, uh, the west end there, west of Coolidge, the whole idea was was kind of to try to, try to build more of a artist community. You know, because there's a lot of spaces in there that artists could run, studios as well as maybe even uh, little, uh, you know, little shot, like a little retail space that they could sell their wares from. And, uh, I think we talked about the the east end, where it's mostly single-family residential, of trying to do similar to what we talked about doing with Greenfield. And and take it into Princeton to maybe try to to develop a little bit more, uh, more like multifamily townhouses, things like that. So
I think that was mostly still west of, um, uh, west of Mortenson, Tim.
Yeah, might have been.
Between Durst and Mortenson. We went east of Mortenson. We, we, at that time, said, "Leave it alone." Yeah.
Right, yeah. So, you know, it's great if a developer came along and bought up a bunch of properties, but as we saw with Greenfield, nothing's really happened, unless we promote it, I guess that that'd be the only way to to really get a developer thinking about that, so.
Well, eleven mile isn't nearly the, uh, uh, high traffic as Greenfield. And Aaron, maybe you don't know this, but as with the Coolidge uh, diet, road diet, has there been a substantial addition of traffic either east or west on eleven mile from Coolidge that's been noticed or been documented?
I don't have those numbers, but I can look into that.
Just curiosity, because it's never been, you know, it is busy at rush hour. I drive at road, I drive home on eleven mile every day. And, um, it's not real busy, though. Uh, that's not like, it's not nearly what we get on Greenfield. And, you know, I think what we we talked about in the past was, uh, it came up earlier. Opened up, we opened up the zoning or we intend to keep the zoning opened up to promote, look, promote all kinds of things. We didn't want to limit it too much. It seems to me there's some, uh, I think that that Brew House is starting to be developed on the south side in Oak Park, correct? Yeah, and, uh, some of those empty businesses, those industrial, uh, businesses are starting to show some signs of life. And, um, on on our side, are most of the buildings full right now?
On eleven? No.
No? Okay, okay. It's hard to tell. So, um, yeah, we'd like to leave that. I think I'd like to leave that open, leave the, um, uh, you know, the opportunities, uh, you know, come on down. Let's see what happens in that, that that stretch of road and, uh, small scale, of course. So, that's it.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Campbell.
I just agree. I think we need to keep it as flat zoning, as much of a flat zoning district as possible. That's basically. So, uh, in some ways, we have some say, but, uh, also let the market forces figure it out as they go to and see how it goes in Oak Park with some of the things they're doing across the street at the Randolph Building, so.
So I I I would tend to agree. I think it makes sense to keep things open and focus on the streetscape and the design of the corridor. I think multiple family makes sense there. I think it would present a unique space for, there's that, the juice manufacturer there, and then we talk about the brewery across the street in Oak Park. Those are kind of like all on a similar vibe. I think it would, it would be an interesting space for some entertainment uses. I know that was one of the things people talked about wanting in the downtown master plan and with all of the fun axe-throwing type things that people like to do now, um, you know, those buildings might lend themselves to uses like that, that are a little bit smaller scale and more appropriate for our community than things that it might be larger, like movie theaters and things like that that aren't necessarily going to work on eleven mile. And I agree that we should keep Woodward generally the same, continue to coordinate with our neighboring communities there. You know, we're a very small slice of a very large corridor, so I don't think it makes sense to plan in isolation in that particular area. Um, Commissioner Mira.
Uh, the other thing that wasn't mentioned, geez, no, I I've lost my thought, uh, about eleven mile was, uh, you know, come back to me. Keep going and, yeah.
Okay, uh, let me know when you, when you get that thought back.
An old age moment.
You, Aaron, were, was Carla Wortman also looking for any input on the outline or did you not want us to come out on that yet?
Yeah, yeah, um, they were looking at for input on that as well, so, um, any comments, questions?
Absent Commissioner Mira, does anyone else have any comments on anything but the outline? No? Tim, did you think of your thought on eleven mile?
No, it'll probably come back to me later.
Does anyone have-
Welcome to my club, Tim.
Yeah, I know.
Does anyone have any comments on the outline? No? I I had one question. So my favorite topic, housing, where is that fitting into the plan?
Okay, so we have neighborhoods. Neighborhood improvements, parks and housing is in, uh, is located in the neighborhoods.
Okay.
Uh, section.
Okay, then I missed it. Good. Commissioner Mira.
The, the thing I was gonna talk about was, in the previous master plan, and I thought this was one of the, the bigger items in there, was finding a way to move the DPW to eleven mile and repurposing the land that they're currently on in the middle of a neighborhood. I still think that is a great idea, and if you find the property on eleven mile to do that with, that's a no-brainer, because then you could build either new homes, townhouses, you know, a small apartment building in that old space.
I agree with that. I, I would like to see that happen, although the the objection to eleven mile, at least on Berkeley's side, is that the the lots are narrow and constrain, uh, DPW operations. That's not to say that, uh, lots couldn't be acquired, uh, as we've talked about in other, other, um, respects. And and, yeah, I think DPW should be in a, in a, not in a residential neighborhood like it is now, but in a more industrial setting like eleven mile is. And, uh, uh, it would be a win-win in my, in my view, you know, to to free up a parcel in a prime location for, uh, for development.
The big picture of that time was the big picture was combine Berkeley and Huntington Woods DPW and move them on eleven mile on the Oak Park side. Now, how that all happens, nobody knows. But that was the big picture. Tim and Mark, if you remember, that's what we-
Yeah, I can remember that.
Yeah.
One question, though. Uh, you know that in the Capitol Improvement Plan, there is a new salt barn that they're planning on building for the new DPW, uh, for the existing DPW location. If this is kind of our plan, how do we relay that to City Council under the DPW? And without them spending, you know, two hundred thousand dollars on a new salt barn, that they'll be tearing down.
Well.
Well, there's a lot of components that go into moving the the DPW yard. So, I mean, that's not something that can willy-nilly be decided once, you know, very quickly. And, I mean, you're looking at, the the space that they have is already very large. There's not a whole lot of parcels there on eleven mile anywhere in that corridor that would support that, so we would be encroaching far into the neighborhoods. And what would we really want to do with ele- what do we really want to do for eleven mile? Do we want to put the DPW yard there or do you want to use it for economic development and and bring business into that area? So that's something to consider. But it wouldn't be a turnaround decision to move the DPW yard to eleven mile.
That does bring up an interesting point, Aaron, because you're right. If we want to focus that area to become something more than what it is and not just an industrial space, especially between Greenfield and Coolidge, and maybe that's not the right place for the DPW. But where the DPW is now isn't necessarily the right spot either. You know, we're so small, it's hard to find a place that is large enough and does make sense. But to have in the back of our minds that 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 yard is on a prime parcel is something to think about.
Yeah, it it's, it's a, it's a logical topic for the master plan. You know, um, nudging people in the direction of, um, exploring alternatives, you know, uh, to to make it happen. It doesn't mean it will happen. Um, that depends on so many things, but if we feel it's desirable for the overall good of the community, then I think we oughta, we oughta make that recommendation. I mean, like, you know, the, the devil's in the details, you know, obviously. We're not here to to do the details, though.
I mean, but for that, it it is already in our current master plan, so then I would want to say, like, why hasn't it been, why hasn't anybody moved on it? Is that the, the city's opinion is that it's not worth it or is it too expensive or there wasn't enough cooperation with another city? They think those things have to be explored as well.
I, I just don't think it was a priority, you know, it wasn't something that a new city manager came in and said, "This is gonna be the number one, uh, thing on my desk. Too many other fires to put out," you know.
There are a lot of things in that master plan that didn't get implemented.
Okay, um, does anyone have any other comments on the, the master plan items that for input on us for tonight? No? Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so I'm gonna say, um, if we, if anyone has any additional comments, I'm sure that they would take them via email. But we're probably ready to move on to our next discussion item then. Um, oh, Tori, we didn't have anyone who wanted to comment on this item, did we? And we don't have any emails, right? Okay, so then we can move on to parking modifications, and I will just ask right off the bat if anyone has any comments on that from the public. No? Okay, um, you know, did you want to give us a brief overview on that?
So this is the same, um, same item that we've been talking about for quite some time. There really wasn't any changes from the last month's discussion. Um, it was just requested that we give it a little bit more time to digest the community comparison uh, details that were submitted, but overall, the the text of the, um, ordinance modification, uh, didn't change since last month. Uh, we did include the ten percent cap. Uh, that was what was added at the previous meet, from previous meeting. But all in all, there hasn't been any substantial changes in the last couple of months, so. If the planning commission was ready to move forward with this as a to move to City Council, then, uh, we would just need a decision to schedule a public hearing. We would do that at the next meeting.
Okay, so does anyone have any comments, additional comments or concerns about moving forward with scheduling the public hearing in this particular item at this point? Uh, Marty.
That's my, raising my hand. Aaron, I'm the one that asked for more time and thank you, and as I, I reviewed all these and I, I do like what you've written here. In the first, very first paragraph, it says, "Based upon the applicant's demonstration," and that's very important, that, uh, you know, different parking standard, uh, would be more appropriate. That's important. Uh, I don't see anything here about a parking study. Is that implied in that statement? Unless I blew by it, but because most of the other communities refer to parking studies. That may be implied. I mean, uh, you know, the applicant, it's based upon the applicant's demonstration, and that could be an implied parking study.
Yeah, that's something we can do. I mean, there's the, the following factors that they can consider. So peak period usage versus normal usage, um, you know, we can add a, a parking in there if you feel more comfortable with that. Um, but really, it's up to the applicant to demonstrate and to provide sufficient uh, details to the planning commission for them to consider. If they want to move forward with an entire park or a parking study, traffic study, um, they can do that, um, or they can look at any one of these, uh, these items that we have included here as an example of what they can and cannot do.
And I like them how they're fairly loose. You know, we're not, we don't have a, uh, some of the communities had charts and calculations and things. I'm, I'm glad we're not doing that. And I think we discussed the ten percent number. That's good. So I'm, I'm happy with it, I, as the way it is, and I, I, like I said, I needed more time to digest it all. And other, and if anybody has any other comments, I, I myself am ha- am happy with it.
Okay, so if no one has any other comments or concerns, anyone? No? Okay, then I think we're ready to go ahead and set the public hearing for that. Aaron, I think we're working on that. And, um, our final discussion item is a package of items, so, um, Aaron, if you want to introduce all of, all of them, and then I kind of want to take discussion on them one at a time, because there's, there's a vague list that you have for us.
Okay. Uh, again, this is, uh, something that we've looked at, um, in previous, previous meetings. So adding the eleven mile districts, um, into the development list, that was overlooked in a previous amendment, so just make sure we add that back in. The we, we talked about this at a number of times, and so I gave kind of a summary of the few items that I thought we should discuss and then where we stood at the, for the last meetings. So, uh, the inclusion of additional parking, um, we discussed and it was determined by the planning commission at the last meetings that, um, any change or any addition to impervious surface on a site, whether it's one space or whether it's ten spaces, um, should still be reviewed by the planning commission. So that's been included. The facade change, uh, we went over that in great detail. If any one facade has changed fifty percent or more, um, that's any one facade, so, um, if they change thirty percent, fifty percent on any one, any one facade. Now granted, included in this at the end of it is the zoning administrator shall have the authority to determine if a project is of certain scope or severity or intensity that, uh, planning commission should be considered. We wanted to allow for previous plans to be reviewed, be revised. What the minor revisions would encapsulate where a site plan could be reviewed administratively and didn't have to come back before the planning commission. So those minor revisions to an approved site plan include, um, additions or alterations to a landscaping. relocation of screening of a trash enclosure, alterations of a parking layout. Um, but certainly anything that would include the construction of a new building, or adding or deleting, uh, curb cuts onto a public road would not be considered minor, um, and those would still come back before the Planning Commission. Section one thirty-eight, six eighty-four, this was for the extension of a site plan approval, uh, by the Planning Commission. The way that the ordinance is currently written, uh, no extensions or, um, exceptions are, are permitted. This can be problematic for, I mean, we're watching it in real time now with projects that have incurred delays that are outside of their control. Uh, this would allow, uh, an applicant to come back before the Planning Commission, um, to get an extension of their site plan without having to go through the whole, uh, site plan review process all over again. So, uh, that has been included, as well as the, uh, administrative review by a zoning administrator. It gives the administrator the discretion to determine if a project should be sent to the Planning Commission. I mentioned this a little while ago. Um, even if by the zoning ordinance standards, it appears that it should be strictly, uh, an administrative approval, staff would have the authority to send that to the Planning Commission if they felt that the scope and intensity of the project warranted, um, approval by the Planning Commission. So, those were the items. Um, the city attorney has looked at this as well, um, and was very comfortable with, with everything that was, um, provided. So, uh, we did include one last thing. There was an inclusion on the required information. Um, samples representing color and materials, that was something that Commissioner Smith had, uh, requested at our last discussion. So, that was added, um, from the last meeting. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I'm gonna, like I said, go take these one by one. Um, so does anyone have any comments on the inclusion of the Eleven Mile District? This was a pretty easy one. Uh, Mr. Mira?
I think she's done a great job on all of these.
Yeah, me too.
Well, I have to say.
Um, anyone else on just a general comment like that, or the Eleven Mile inclusion? No. So, um, then, Ms. Luto, I would say go ahead and, and move forward with the Eleven Mile District, um, section. And then the next part, um, was adding parking spaces without Planning Commission review. Um, any comments, questions on that one? So, is the recommendation that we, looks like most cities do not allow for administrative review for the addition of any parking spaces, is that right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, some of them have a, had a threshold. Um, some of the larger, more rural, uh, areas, um, may have a threshold of you can add twenty-five spaces before you need Planning Commission approval. Obviously, the city of Berkeley is not dealing with properties that are that large. Um, so it was more of a question related to if a property was adding one space, two spaces. Um, what, what would be the trigger for Planning Commission approval for impervious surface? But, um, based on our discussion at the previous meetings, um, the majority of the members felt that they still wanted to see it, uh, no matter how much impervious surface was being added to. So, we can just keep, uh, any additional parking would be, uh, would require Planning Commission approval.
And is there any objection from anyone for, for keeping that at this then?
Not at all.
Okay. Um, so the next one was the facade alteration. This was kind of a cleanup item from some amendments we'd made previously. Any comments on this particular item? Yes, Ms. Buckler?
I like how they defined it, because I think we, at one point, discussed, like, if they change paint colors. The Marty issue, like, if they paint, do they need a site review? That wasn't your issue, Marty. So, I, I like that it's defined better.
Yep.
Anyone else? Uh, Matt?
Little question regarding the window scenario. I know that in some cases, they've been adding windows, but sometimes they're putting in windows that are just blacked out or blanked out just for looks. Is there any way we can put some notes in there that the windows are supposed to see in, instead of just putting a blacked-out window? Not to point them out, is a clear example of, you have windows and then they just blank them off inside, so you can't see what's actually going on.
Okay.
It doesn't make a draw to the area, it just kind of hinders it.
Maybe we shouldn't see inside, Matt.
Well, there is certain things, yes, you shouldn't be able to see inside, but I, I just don't want to see people put up, uh, expand their windows good things just to make the, the windows meet the requirement, but then it doesn't just kind of defeat the purpose when they put up a big black sign and signs you can't see on.
So, agreed. I, I would agree with that comment completely. I think we had this discussion as part of AquaTads.
Yes, exactly.
Um, and I think the Downtown Design Guidelines address this item specifically. I don't know if it gives us per- specific percentage that's required for transparency on the windows. Um, but I know it addresses that, that we want windows that we can see generally, see into.
The transparency issue, I mean, that's something that we could look at in another section. That's not something that would pertain to this, uh, ordinance amendment that we're doing right here. Um, something we can look at. There is a maximum percentage of window signs that can be on a, in a window, um, and that's fifty percent of that window. But, um, we don't have a, a standard for transparency of windows. But we can certainly address that and look at that in the future, but that's not, um, it's not something we could add to this one, because it just wouldn't pertain to this section.
So, I would agree that that'd be something I'd be interested in looking at in the future. And I do think it's covered in the design guidelines. When people put up that glazing that really makes the window look black, it, it totally defeats the purpose.
And we've had cases in the past with, uh, party stores and things where they redevelop and they put in a bunch of windows and they plaster them with signs. And the, the public safety was against that, because, um, they want to know what they're getting into if they get a call. They want to have visual. So, I think, Erin, that is addressed in another section. That's not part of this. That's just another example of, of that, that maximum amount of signage or transparency, whatever we want to call it.
Commissioner Mira?
And I think when AquaTads came before council for, uh, their, like, special use that they had to do, he mentioned that they did some reworking of their floor plan, and they wouldn't, wouldn't need to be doing that to any of the windows.
Mm-hmm. Oh, that's great.
Yeah, so I don't know where that stands with development, yet if it's, if it's, if it's, uh, ready to, you know, any sort of moving forward with construction or anything. But that's something that Erin, maybe you can keep an eye out for. But I think, I, when I talked to him that day, because I know I had missed the meeting where they, they were approved, and when he spoke to council, and then I spoke to him after the meeting, I think, he said, yeah, they were able to rework this floor plan, and we're not going to need to block out that window.
Okay, any other comments on the facade alterations amendments? Okay.
I have a question about facade alterations, and I don't know how this applies, but I'm not saying negative about what Mr. Jay's do. Mr. Jay did a really nice remodel of their landscaping in front of that. Did that ever end up in front of, does that need to end up in front of the Planning Commission, or is that just something they did on the sly? Or did that ever end up in front of the building apartment? How did that all, I don't remember seeing anything about it. That, that was completely separate from the building, though.
Which property is that?
Mr. Jay's party store over on, uh, Wiltshire and Coolidge.
Oh, I did notice they put up some landscaping that the liquor store.
Very, very nice landscaping. I'm not trying to, I just, the question I got is, it's auxiliary sort of structured, not attached to the building, so it fully doesn't have a facade change?
No. If that didn't, if it didn't change the, the layout of the interior and they were just adding some landscaping, that wouldn't necessarily require to be coming to the Planning Commission, no.
Okay.
And that kind of leads right into our next item of the minor site plan revisions, and what should or should not come before the Planning Commission. Um, so Erin had made some suggestions. Does anyone have any comments on this item?
I do. Um, minor revisions, on the bottom page two, minor revisions to an approved site plan. Item three, alterations to internal, internal parking lot of all-street lot, et cetera. I'd say without change of the number of spaces. Because someone could have twenty-five spaces and consider, uh, taking one away or adding one as a minor change. Do we want to say something about not changing the number of spaces? Just throwing that out for discussion.
Yeah, that would probably make sense.
So, you're looking at number three on the administrative review, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is that something that you think we should, uh, see, or is that something that you believe administration, you, should be, uh, should, should deal with?
Well, there, in, in the parking section of the ordinance, they're prohibited from eliminating any parking spaces that would, um, that doesn't meet the requirement of their current land use. Um, so they would still have to meet their, their parking requirement. If you want to see things that reduce any parking at all, or green infrastructure or otherwise, you know, this is where we can, where we can add that in, but we would just need to look at what, what's the reasoning behind you want to, wanting to look at that? If they're not, if they're still making their parking requirement, what's the, what's the intent of the, the review?
So, you're thinking of businesses that are required, let's say, to have, um, ten spaces, and they have fifteen, and they want to take five out and put in a really great rain garden, something like that?
Provided they don't have any shared parking agreements or anything, anything to that nature. And then the, in that example, the rain garden and the infrastructure would be looked at by DPW or Engineering Services, um, to make sure it complies with all of those. But, um, um, if they meet their parking requirements and if it doesn't in, impede any ingress, egress, or from fire safety or public safety perspective, what's the added, what would be the reasoning for the added review?
Okay, there wouldn't be, Erin. You answered my question. That's why I threw it out there. So, if it, if it still complies with everything, we're fine. That, that's fine. Just, it just, if it doesn't, you know, but that, you're right, that kicks in another part of the ordinance, right?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, they're not allowed to, they're not allowed to reduce their parking, um, for an in- intended or future, future use of that property.
Thank you. That answers my question.
My assumption is too, is you have layout restrictions and how a space has to be set up anyway, right?
Yes, mm-hmm. Maneuvering lanes and, and things of that nature, yes. So, all of those would still have to, have to be made in.
So, I thought this was a really good list. Um, I, I don't have any changes to it. Does, does anyone else? No? Okay, then, um, we're moving on to site plan extensions. Do you have a couple ideas in there, Erin, for maybe a one-year extension or two one-year extensions? Um, thoughts on site plan extensions from anyone?
Two one-year extensions is fine with me.
I also vote for the two, two one-year extensions.
Well, this, Mark, I, I, that's, that's good with me. Um, uh, this, this is probably a quibble, but, uh, the, I think that the, the language should include a word, um, such as, maybe not for good cause, because that's a little bit strict, but, um, for, for, for reasonable cause. It, it should be clear that the, uh, request for extension is supported by, uh, something we would consider reasonable, is not just them dragging their feet for whatever reason. And, um, um, so, right now, the way it reads, um, it just says, uh, to be reviewed and granted by the Planning Commission. That kind of seems like we're supposed to just rubber stamp it. And, and I would be a little more comfortable with said, um, uh, um, uh, grant, uh, you know, I, I, you know, I'd have to come up with a language, but for, granted for reasonable cause, something like that.
This wasn't intended to be a, a rubber stamp or, uh, you know, forcing your hand that if they came before you, that you would automatically grant it. That was not, that was not the intent, so I apologize if that's the way it, it came out. It was more of a, um, you have the authority to grant them should you choose to do so.
Yeah, um, so, I, I, I mean, I'm just, I think it would be a little clearer if you just said, um, you know, for, for sufficient cause or something like that. That's still very, very general and gives us total discretion. But at least it, it, it doesn't, you know, tempt somebody to come in and insist that they get a, uh, an extension for whatever reason they want. That, that's my point.
Any other thoughts or comment on site plan extensions?
No, I want to bounce back on required information, section one thirty-eight, six eighty? If I may?
Yep.
Item eighteen on page four, color and type of facade material. It says here, samples representing blah, blah, blah shall be presented upon request. I just want to say, bring them. Samples representing color and type of facade materials, period. I think, I don't want to, uh, have them show up and then we have to request them. I think we should say it has to be part of their submittal.
Yeah, no, that would be my, my request in my review letter to them, that they should bring those to you, but.
Okay. That's not how I write it, but that's fine. Okay.
That's fine. I can change it.
Yep, just period, right. Thank you.
I agree with that, too.
Okay, so, any comments on previous then, or those extensions? We're good with extensions? I think we're ready to move that forward, Erin. And then the last one, let me make sure I get this, say this correctly, um, was the administrative review by the zoning administrator, so basically allowing staff to send something to us if they feel, um, it's off the gravity or weight that it needs to be reviewed. I think that that is a great idea and was surprised it wasn't already in there. Um, anyone else with any comments on that one? No? Okay, so you have a lot of amendments to move forward on that, Erin. Um, any sta- any public comments on any of these, Tori? No? Okay, and I'm assuming no emails. Okay, then we will move on to, uh, liaison reports. Does anyone have anything to report from their various, um, boards and committees?
I do.
Go ahead.
So, uh, Chamber is, uh, even though school is gonna be, uh, virtual, I guess, for every year, like a welcome. Uh, they're planning, still planning a state-of-the-city address. Normally, that's, uh, held, uh, like as a breakfast. Uh, it's gonna be a virtual event this year as of right now, and it's gonna actually be kind of a happy hour event at four P.M. And it will be on October twenty-ninth. That's about what the Chamber has going on right now.
Okay.
And this will be my last report from the Chamber, so you're gonna have to find a new liaison.
I know. We appreciate you doing that, Tim. Anyone else from their various committees, boards? No? I know the Master Plan Steering Committee's been hard at work, so thank you guys for doing that.
Environmental, we, we moved our meeting from, um, from this month to September. Uh, so we're gonna do, um, September, November, rather than August, October. That's gonna be our sequence for the, for the end of the year.
Okay. Um, all right. Then I will move on to our commissioner and staff comments. Um, I am going to go around, but I'm gonna reserve the last spots for Michelle and Tim. Um, Matt, do you have any comments?
Um, the only I will say is Mr. Jay's party store, they did make a very nice improvement to the area for what they did at that corner of Wiltshire and Coolidge. So, I'll give them some kudos for doing a nice job.
Um, Commissioner Campbell, anything?
No, nothing.
Um, Commissioner Richardson?
Well, I, I, I do want to acknowledge, uh, Michelle and Tim. Uh, um, you know, I, uh, I think after, after Tim leaves, I'm going to be the next oldest person to, uh, Marty, uh, which I still feel like I'm learning this job and getting my feet wet. But, um, geez, not to go on and on, but, uh, both of these individuals have been outstanding commissioners, in my view, very civic-minded, and, uh, good mentors. Tim particularly, since he preceded me onto the board, um, have been good mentors and good role models, uh, for, um, role models for, for being a, a commissioner. So I know that both of them are going to continue on in Berkeley activities, but I just, I just want to personally thank them for helping me out. Michelle and I don't always agree on everything, but you know, she always comes prepared, her comments are always represent insight and she was chair during a very difficult, you know, time in the, in the commission's history. And, you know, she, she had charge of the meetings and, and wouldn't put up with any nonsense and generally got us through our agenda, so. So she is to be commended for that too, so good luck to them. I'm sure I'll see both of them around town.
Um, Marty?
A couple things. It's, it looks like somebody's starting to kick things around at La Salette School. I don't know if it's my imagination, but it's good to see if that's finally, Erin any input on that? Are they in fact starting to work on it?
Yeah, they're doing some, some early work now and we're still waiting to schedule our pre-construction meeting. They still have a couple of last minute items they need to secure for that, but yeah, they're, they've, they've worked through a lot of the site issues and, and things that they needed to with DPW and community development. So yeah, very exciting.
Fantastic. Item two, there's a, a park that's being developed or proposed at the high school parking lot where they took out that, that, that building. I think there was a joint operation between the school district and was it the DDA?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay. Now, let me ask, should that have come to us? I mean, it's fine, I like it, I saw it, I was, you know, looked at the presentation as a wonderful project. Should that have come to the planning commission?
That is on school property, so they don't need to secure any of our permits and approvals. We did go through several meetings with them to, to go over layout and DPW's been with it and public, public safety's been involved as well, but it's not something that needed a planning commission approval.
Fair enough. Then finally, I also want to say we'll miss Tim and Michelle and I'll echo what Mr. Richardson's said, Michelle, you know, taking the chair for that year or so was a tough time and Tim being here a long time. Well, Michelle, you've been here quite a while too on the planning commission, so thank you both for your input and, you know, we'll see you around town and got some big seats to fill. Nothing personal about that, but you know.
Commissioner Campere?
Not much, I'll just echo. Luck on your guys' next endeavors and, and I'm looking forward to meeting our new commissioners as well.
Okay, and then I will also go piggyback on all of those comments. Everyone put it so well, Mark, you put it so eloquently, but thank you guys for being such good role models, for welcoming to, welcoming me to the commission a few years ago and, and giving all of us in the community a good example of informed civic engagement and participation. We definitely need as, as much of it as, as we can get. So thank you and, and please don't be a stranger to commission meetings. If you have something to contribute, come back and talk to us during public comment because you both have really good ideas. Tim, anything?
So, yeah, I've got a, I didn't prepare a statement or anything, but I just, you know, I've been looking back and I said, so I'm pretty sure I joined in the spring. I don't remember whether it was April or May of 2006, so I've been here 14 more, plus more than 14 years. There's been three chairs in that 14 year time and one of them was Michelle and again, like others have said, kudos to you because I wouldn't have wanted that chair position at that time. Now it's called community development director, but when I first started, it was the, the city planner, so we've had three of you as well, two city managers, four mayors. I can't count the number of other commissioners that have come and gone in that 14 years as well as council members. So it's been my pleasure. I know I'm going to miss it because part of what I like about this is knowing what's going on, but just my life has just gotten so busy and I don't feel like I have the, the bandwidth to prepare like I like to prepare for these meetings. And I will definitely be around to, to keep an eye on things and if I have something to say, I will show up and say it. Unfortunately, it seems like for a while we're going to be in these Zoom meetings and I don't particularly enjoy these. I probably do too many of them during the week and it just, it gets, it's gotten very old, so, but I wish both Michelle's and my replacement, good luck. I will still be around, I'm going to stay active and involved in the Chamber and who knows if something else comes up that I think I can contribute to, I may volunteer for that. So thank you everybody, thank you guys. I'm going to miss you guys too, so. And good luck with the master plan.
Thanks.
Thanks. Michelle?
Well, Kristin, I want to thank you for taking the chair because that was, I'm really not cut out for that. I'm much more of a worker bee than a leader bee. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time on the planning commission. I've learned an awful lot. Marty, you are always, always in the details and you have, you are such a good steward to continue forward as with Mr. Richardson and of course all the new members as well as they come up to speed and Tim, you were always very prepared and it's a little overwhelming for the first year, you're just here this and that and you finally find your way in. I didn't think it should be a lifetime tenancy for me though, so I will find other ways to keep my community engagement and my love of volunteerism. And I, we love Berkeley, it's a great second hometown for me and I know it will continue to grow and there will be challenges and there will be victories and there will be disagreement, but just remember, keep your eye on the ball. Everything we do is for the greater good and with the information we have at the moment and a little of the plan. So thank you, Erin. And city staff, Ross, I see your picture up there, thank you as well. So best of luck and best of luck. I see Joe, I think you're one of our new guys that's going to join, so best of luck.
Okay, Erin, anything to add?
I just want to thank Commissioner Buckler, Commissioner Miread for your many years of service. It's been wonderful getting to know both of you. I wish you both the best of luck in all your, in all your future endeavors.
Okay, and that brings us to adjournment. Does anyone have any motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
What we're going to do without you guys.
Right. My husband's got a bottle of wine open right now, I can tell you.
Go celebrate your free Tuesday night. Erin, could you call the roll, please?
Miread?
Yes.
Patterson, or I'm sorry, Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Buckler? Campbell?
Yes.
Kepner?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. All right, we adjourned, everyone have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night.
See you.
See you around.